Okay, good morning, everyone. And, oh, sorry. Now I'm, now my camera's on, thank you very much. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Township of Georgian Bay Committee of the Whole Meeting. And the Part One, I'll call it. And I'd like to call this meeting order at eleven thirteen. And I'm not going to repeat the land acknowledgement, as I read that earlier today. And but obviously, we want to acknowledge the indigenous contributions to our area for eons. I'm going to ask council if there's any declarations of pecuniary interest or conflict of interest? And then, seeing none, I'm going to skip straight to Item Eight, New Business, as the procurement policy discussion and presentation will be taking place at one o'clock. So, Process Improvements, Items Seven through Twelve. Counselor Cooper, if you want to introduce this item, and then we will get the discussion going.
So, thank you, Mayor, and I apologize for not sort of indicating this in the previous meeting. There's a couple of things that I'm concerned about in terms of where we're at at the moment on this process here, so to speak, process improvement, process. And that is that I was hoping that the way we would deal with this is deal with maybe one subject or two subjects per Cow meeting as opposed to sort of going through it rather quickly and giving our counselors time to sort of give a lot of consideration to each one of the matters as opposed to getting it done, so to speak. I'm a big fan of getting things done, but I was hoping to have a little more time to consider the matters and have a more fulsome discussion around each matter. I'm also concerned, in this particular case, we got through six matters last time, and we had two of our counselors that were not able to be here and were not able to contribute, which also was disappointing, at least for me, I don't know for them, but that's sort of my comment. I was really trying to sort of put the brakes on a bit to make sure we take maybe half an hour or forty-five minutes on one or two matters as opposed to half an hour or forty-five minutes on six matters. So, that's my commentary.
All right, well, I guess my response to that is we covered those half dozen items last time at the will of council, because council, and I think after half a dozen items ran out of steam. But I also think it's important to note that each one of those items has some form of follow-up, some form of action plan, some more serious than others. But, and I think, to me, that was the positive from the discussion we had last time, is that we've, as a consequence of that, we have different individuals doing something or more on each item. And I think that, to me, that's the positive.
So it's going to come back in the sense, anyway, that will allow the other counselors to three or not three, or whatever the case may be. I just wanted to make sure that there's full participation and careful consideration.
Yeah, no, I
So if we go through the next six, that's fine with me, too. It's just I hope we come back and revisit these things with more information and be able to take some action.
Well, and I think, my hope, Counselor Cooper, is, I mean, I suggest we'll start at Item Seven and move on in a numerical order, is we'll have some discussion. And however that discussion goes, you know, Item Seven, we may create a working group. We may say, "The heck with it," or we may say, "We need staff to create a report." I don't know. And, but I think, I think the value in this personally is that we're taking these items that you want us to consider, and we're giving, let me call it, at least initial consideration. And then, you say, you know, last time we, last time we did this, we created a working group. We, or started scheduling one-on-ones. We have, we have counselor and staff member reviewing a motion. We have you know, there are other follow-ups here, we're going to do some more review. And, or, in one case, where the clerk has confirmed it's on her work plan. I mean, so I think, I think there won't, I don't think it's a matter of, you know, discussion and done.
But that's all I was worried about, that it was one and done.
Yeah.
And we missed having some input.
Yeah, it's unfortunate when counselors can't make meetings, but yes, it does. No.
Shouldn't hear it, that's all.
Counselor, Counselor Hazelton?
Yes, I'm the guilty party, I must have been. Probably the first one in a long time. Anyway, so I, I'm, I was trying to make sense of the document that was prepared and provided to us. And I see yellow highlighted things, see this for Item Three, see this for Item Four. And then I go back and look at the resolutions for Committee of the Whole. And I think I get Items Number One and Two. I'm not sure what Item Three really means, or if there's any kind of so I need, so I want to ask the question, don't know who the question needs to go to, but Three and Four, clearly, in my mind, are not clear. I can use a double negative there. So, how do we get clarity on what the real outcome is in the way of an action? Clerk, wait.
So, Item Three, Counselor, so maybe we'll just kind of step back. So clearly, step, Process Improvements through debriefs. You know, the mayor, Counselor Cooper in Jarvis, and the director of planning are going to meet as a working group. So Item Three, it was Counselor Predko and myself were appointed to work on the Identification, Selection of Consultants and Experts per Item Three as listed in Counselor Cooper's Process Improvements and Report Back to Council. All of these are kind of like a reporting back to council in some capacity, so.
Okay, so.
So that's not just Counselor Predko and I walking away and having a discussion amongst ourselves and being like, "Oh, we talked about it." Do you know what, like, we're going to meet and come back.
I get it. So, this Committee of the Whole meeting was on March Fourth. We're on April Eighth. Have we had any process improvements through debrief sessions between then and now?
This motion was ratified by council yesterday, so in theory, we, we weren't allowed, we didn't have a final direction until yesterday to move forward with some of these things. Some steps have been taken place, as you're aware. The one-on-ones have been scheduled, just because all of you have very busy calendars. So that's one direction that has been taken.
So, what I'm hearing is really
The debriefs haven't, because they haven't met yet.
I understand that. I guess what I'm focused on here is full progress has been made on Number Two. No excuse for the fact we just approved yesterday. Number One hasn't had any progress done on it. I'm confused about what the real action item is for Three. And Number Four looks like it's really light loose wording of encourage more communication. Well, we've been having, we've been staking that we need more communication for eight years now, and I don't see any actions defined to accomplish that. So Number Two had
Counselor Hazel, I'm going to stop you.
Right.
This was all discussed last meeting and ratified yesterday.
I understand that, but the point that I'm getting to is
Because you were absent doesn't mean we have to re-discuss everything. Sorry.
Okay, we have an agenda item that includes all of these items. And it's pointing to another document. And what I'm trying to highlight here is that other document doesn't give us clarity as to what is going on here at the township. So, even though you want to jump to Number Seven, I'm trying to point out that Numbers, certainly Numbers Three and Four appear to be very vague. And Number One hasn't been acted on, and why that is, I don't know, because
Because it wasn't ratified until yesterday, and we've had council meetings, we've been in council meetings since.
But Number Two was acted on immediately following this without being ratified. So my point is, why do we pick Number Two to act on? And Number One, we don't, we can't do it, because we don't want to do it, because it hasn't been ratified. Like, we need to, we need to be consistent in what we do and how we do it. So what I'm trying to point out here is there's a lack of consistency, and there's a lack of clarity on Three and Four as to what's going on. And so I don't want to be sitting here in a month or two months or three months without any understanding of what we should have expected coming out of Three and Four.
Only part of Number Two has been acted on. As was outlined in the email, there will be a template to follow in that discussion, in those meetings. That has not been started at this point in time. We have some resources we can pull from. The biggest piece and the reason why we worked on that one now is because all of you have very busy schedules and staff have very busy schedules. And if we waited another month to try to schedule all of those dates, that would have been pushed those one-on-ones back even further. And as it is, they're already scheduled for June. So as a courtesy to everyone's schedules, including yours, that piece was acted on before this was ratified yesterday. The rest of them have not been acted on in advance of. Number Six is already on my work plan. Number Three, Counselor Predko and I have not met to review the Identification, Selection of Consultants and Experts motion per Counselor Cooper's Process Improvements document, because it wasn't ratified until yesterday. That's a significant amount of staff time and a significant amount of Counselor Predko's time. That review will resolve in a motion coming back. If there was issues with this resolution, yesterday, when it was ratified during the consent agenda, should have been the time that this was brought up and discussed. Alternatively, the stream is available for everyone to go back and watch. These are written and were decided on by council at that meeting. The encouragement of communication between council and SMT regarding work plans is a two-way street. So we bring that report forward. If there are questions that any member of council have at any time, you're certainly welcome to reach out to any member of SMT and ask for a status update. How that is going to flow moving forward, I can't speak to that, because there's there's seven of you, and there's, what, ten SMT members? So that might look different for each department on how one communicates back and forth. I can't speak to that one specifically, but I can speak to the other five are definitely in a process that would come back for council for consideration in some process or report.
I'll pause. Counselor Graziano?
Thank you, worship, and I, I would agree with my fellow counselor in that the ambiguity here is somewhat concerning to me. I understand that, to our clerk's point, that these things have been ratified, but at the same time, I'm just, I'm not sensing that I have a very clear understanding of where we are and where we're going to be and how these are going to be addressed and in what fashion and what timelines. You know, I'm hearing a lot of, "Well, we'll go from point A to point Z, from Z back to G, G over to C" at some point, at the discretion of staff, and I understand work plans are there. I am quite concerned. I also want to re-articulate or address a concern and not to conflate two separate motions. But back in June of 'oh four, a motion by myself had passed with respect to outstanding council items in a bi-monthly meeting, which, within the resolution, said that it would commence in August. We are now in 2025. In January, our mayor had advised that staff were aware that this still needed to be coordinated. We don't have that still coordinated on our agenda. You know, we have since had numerous special meetings that have been called and coordinated by staff, but yet we still don't have the outstanding council meeting that was passed and ratified by, by our council. I am concerned that we don't have clarity. Things are very ambiguous here. I'd like to see a better understanding of what and when these are going to get addressed. And with regards to the counselors that have been identified, I'm sorry, the document that I'm looking at, the report that has been provided to us by staff doesn't articulate, and/or perhaps this was written by Counselor Cooper, so forgive me if I'm incorrect in identifying who wrote this, but doesn't articulate which counselors have been assigned to what actions as well. And I don't recall from the previous Cow meeting, us discussing it, and forgive me, I mean, a month ago is, you know, three flus later and, and some major health issues. So, so with that said, I'd like to be, I'd like to have some clarity on, on all of this and at least some transparency with some timelines, and some timelines that we can actually achieve. Thank you.
Okay. I, I would like us to move on to Item Seven, simply because we, yesterday ratified the Committee of the Whole meeting, and we didn't, when we had that discussion last time, we did not agree to or include in our resolution specific deadlines. We know that things are starting to happen already, or plan to be happening on those items. And if anything, I think I'm hearing from counselors that they'd like an update as to progress on those items, and I'm sure that will happen. But we had set aside some time today to continue down the list that Counselor Cooper provided us back, and I believe it was August, July, or August last year. And in my mind, next up on that list is Item Seven, and I'd like us to go to discussing Item Seven. And I'm not sure how far we'll get down this list today. Maybe, as Counselor Cooper suggested, might only be one or two items. But let's, let's get the conversation going on Item Seven, because I think it's important that we keep this moving forward. Counselor Cooper, would you like to introduce Item Seven?
I think it should be evident what it's about. I'm, I'm really not going to offer any other comment, other than the initial comments I made, which I am concerned that we're rushing this through. And so I really don't have anything more to add.
We're, I'm a little sensitive to that accusation, "We're rushing this through," and that we put this on the agenda for today, and we're now wanting to discuss Item Seven. So we knew it was coming. Counselor Jarvis?
Yeah, I'm just going to add my two cents in here, for what it's worth. The discussion at our last meeting was pretty extensive about the first six items. I thought we went through it, may have gone through it maybe too quickly. We did go through it without the presence of a couple of counselors on hand, acknowledged. But yesterday, we did ratify the resolutions that we, that were put forth at that meeting for those first six items. The individuals who are going to be participating, or, yeah, staff or, and/or council, were together, have all been identified within those resolutions. It's a matter of reading through them and figuring all that out. So I don't see where things have gone off the rails, so to speak, with regards to the first six items. We did deal with them, they were discussed, and the appropriate personalities were identified as dealing with them from here on in, per the resolutions, as I said yesterday. So I think, I have no problem moving ahead with Item Seven today. And we may get through it in the same manner we did at our meeting back in March and be able to move on. Maybe not, but I think we're fine where we're at right now. And I expect that we will see some activity in the first six in fairly short order, but not today. Thank you.
Counselor Graziano?
Thank you, worship, and I'm, as a question with regards to the clerk, or to the clerk, rather, directed to the clerk, I'm assuming that we are still within the window of filing a motion for reconsideration, if in the event that ones need to be. And we did have some counselors that missed Cow, and I feel that perhaps it's unfair to those counselors to have not had an opportunity to voice their thoughts and comments with regards to Zero or One to Six. And so I'm wondering whether our clerk confirmed, whether or not we can bring forward a motion to reconsider.
Yes, you can.
Great, thank you for confirming.
Was that then a request to have such a motion?
Well, as I'm not the mover nor the seconder of the original first six, I think that perhaps that question be better directed to the mover and seconder, just to confirm whether or not, especially, I believe, the seconder was absent in the last Cow meeting, anyway. So perhaps it's better suited that you ask the mover and seconder. I'll, I'll consider my options and get back to the clerk's office shortly.
Okay, so if I understand, Clerk, wait, can you explain the reconsideration process, please?
A motion, a motion of reconsideration can only be taken place at the next regularly scheduled meeting of that meeting type. So the March Fourth Committee of the Whole meeting, the next regular scheduled meeting, is today's meeting of April Eighth. A motion of reconsideration requires two-thirds majority for that to be passed, and then you can reconsider the original motion.
If I may, your worship?
Go ahead.
So, given that it was ratified yesterday, it wasn't official until yesterday, if memory, if what I'm understanding is correct. And so with the ratification being yesterday, then the next scheduled meeting would be next month. Is that not accurate?
No, that's the ratification. You only have to the next regular scheduled meeting of the meeting in which it was first considered, which is Committee of the Whole.
So are we talking about, when we talk about reconsideration, we're talking about the reconsideration of the resolutions of the whole of March Four? Okay. So the fact that they were ratified yesterday is somewhat academic there. If a, if a resolution to reconsider those resolutions, is it a package of resolutions, or is it? So what, the resolutions have points one, two, three, four, five, six? Is it a, how would, how would the reconsideration read?
It's one motion, so it's a reconsideration of the motion.
So, I would be pleased to move a reconsideration of the resolutions. Normally, there is a reason for a reconsideration. And my reason would be that there is significant ambiguity and lack of date outcomes, timeline outcomes included in the resolutions. And I believe that Counselor Graziano has previously put forward a resolution stating that when we pass resolutions, we need a, a target date or timeline for the resolutions, and this doesn't include that. So I would so move.
Is there a seconder for that motion? Counselor Cooper?
Sure.
So we have Counselor Hazelton moving and Counselor Cooper seconding that the Cow motion twenty twenty-five dash zero zero six be reconsidered? Is that the wording? Okay. Move by Counselor Hazelton, send by Counselor Cooper, be it resolved at the Committee of the Whole reconsider motion C O W dash twenty twenty-five dash zero zero six. And we need four in favor? Then I'm going to call the vote, all those in favor. All right, we have four in favor. No, we, one, two, three, sorry.
Counselor Cooper? I thought I saw his hand up.
Oh, got it, yeah, we have four in favor, so that is carried. So now what do we do?
Now you go back to motion Cow twenty twenty-five dash zero zero six, and you can re-debate the entire motion.
All right. So initiate the re-debate.
So, I'm not uncomfortable with Items One or Two. And I'll leave it up to my fellow counselors to offer their comments on it. I think Item Three needs to have some clarity on a time window, because I think Item Number Three, as recommended by the original movers and, and seconders of that, is a very, very important resolution. And it needs priority and a time window for action. I'm not uncomfortable with Counselor Predko and the clerk taking the actions. What I am uncomfortable with is the lack of a timeline. And I believe it to be a very important resolution, and I don't see that reflected in the actions. I'll pause there, thank you.
Counselor Graziano?
Thank you, worship. With regards to, or with respect to One through Six, because I believe we're only discussing One through Six as they were the ones that were passed, my comments are, with regards to process improvement through debriefs, I'm not against who's been identified here. In fact, I'm looking forward to the outcome of those discussions. Number Two, goal-setting for each, each term of council. I would agree with, with respects to one-on-ones. However, what I think absent here is an agenda as to the nature of what will be discussed. In the initial invite, I did ask our your assistant, your worship, that, that be provided to me. I'd like to understand in advance what questions are going to be asked and what the outcome will be, so I can better tailor what information I bring forward to that meeting, rather than coming into a meeting blind and not having my information well thoroughly researched as well as prepared. So having an agenda in advance would be ideal, and I'd like to be able to see that. So an agenda be circulated, and perhaps we, as council, could add items to the agenda and/or a template. Identification and selection of consultants and experts. The only concern that I have here, and I don't disagree with the clerk and Counselor Predko, I think they'll do a fantastic job, is I'd like to, and it's just my suggestion, and perhaps the mover and seconder of this motion may not wish to attend or be participants in that. But I think that the mover, seconder of this particular motion may want to also participate in there. Because I suspect that there's some great experts that can be recommended through the mover and seconder as well, that perhaps our clerk and Counselor Predko are not aware of within the community. Annual staff work plans. I very much would like to see some participation on council for this. So having a counselor identified within that as well, I think, would be ideal. Aside from just encouraging more communication between council and staff regarding work plans, I think I'd like to see a counselor present in identifying potential priorities or working with staff, and then communicating those priorities, and then having it go through, of course, council to, to ratify and, and approve. Getting better understandings as to the roles we play. I'm indifferent with respect to this, there's no comments there. And code of conduct, I would also recommend that a counselor be present in those discussions, and perhaps a working group be created between staff and council and/or a single counselor to work on the code of conduct. And or a single counselor to work on the code of conduct going forward, because I think there should be. The the voice and the perspective of a counselor in that if in the event that we're going to make any amendments. So those are my thoughts on one through six. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Predko.
Thank you. And it's a point of clarification to go back to number three. I believe we were talking about the criteria for selecting experts and consultants, not. Creating a list of experts and consultants.
If I may, your worship.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. And if that is such the case, I still feel that perhaps the criteria would be better suited with a few sets of eyes on it rather than just the the two listed here. So my my comments still stand. Thank you.
All right, I'm looking if there's any other. Comments here. I'm I'm going to make one comment or actually at least one as I'm thinking of them through. I I'm a little bit. You know, an item to a goal goal setting for each term of council. And you know, to be resolved that the the mayor and CEO. Schedule one on ones together with each member of council. And in in this request for agenda. Kind of confuses me simply because I presume that each one of these conversations would be driven by the individual counselor who's in that. Meeting and that that individual counselor, I wouldn't want to have them handcuffed by an agenda that was set by somebody else. So I I find it a little bit. Confusing. That I I don't understand frankly why we'd want to set an agenda. Which would restrict the potential conversation of that individual counselor in that meeting. So that's that's my response with regards to that. And. And I also think we have to be. A little bit careful. With the annual staff work plan simply because. We as council as a whole. Basically direct our C O as to the work we want to get accomplished, and then the CEO. Assigns tasks to the the senior management team, and while I'm all in favor of. Communication between council and senior management team on these work plans, I I I'm not sure I want to see one or two. Counselors directing or significantly influencing those work plans without all of council being involved. So that that's that's a comment I wanted to make on that one. And. I'm not sure about for number five. Get a better understand the roles we play creating a working group in the sense that. To me. That that is very much a part of the whole council, the whole council have, you know. And and we've had a number of training exercises. And obviously, as a consequence, as it says here, as a consequence of each counselor discussing. Their. Their goals. I would hope that further discussion on 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 item five would include. The entire council, not just select individuals from the council. My responses. And I and I suppose what where we're going with all this rediscussion of this item from last month is to take the. Motion that the the resolution that was. Passed in modifying it into a new motion with some additional wording. I presume that's where we're headed with this discussion. Counsel Cooper.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and I just wanted to. Say that they. I obviously wasn't clear enough when I first introduced this, but. I I think my objective of this was to to create almost. Twelve working groups to deal with each one of these questions and come back with some thoughts and recommendations to. Our committee of the whole and and work through one or two of them per meeting so that we really. Flush it out quite a bit and as opposed to sort of. A couple of thoughts here and there on each each one of these items. So that was why I I was sort of providing. The meal, so to speak, and looking for people to take a few bites out of each subject and and deal with it as opposed to being. Driving the whole process. I was trying to drive the the. Action items or the the discussion items. The other thing I, as an example, that you the question was raised about what would happen in. You know, meetings with the between council and committee of, sorry, the council members, counselors and the. C O and mayor. I think there's all sorts of different things that could be discussed in a meeting like that that would be very useful. I'll give you an example. Maybe we should have a discussion in that meeting with each other, the three of us, for example, to talk about. The process that we use. Maybe our committee of the whole process is. Not the most efficient. Maybe it's too broad. Maybe we need to consider a committee structure. We know our neighbors up the shore, the archipelago have have committees. Committees related to operations, committees related to this and the finance, whatever the case may be. And I I I kind of like that structure because it allows for. What I just described earlier, which is a group of people giving some. Advanced thought to a specific challenge and working through it and then coming to a with a recommendation to council to say this is. What we recommend. To as a go forward, but obviously council has to A, consider that and B, approve it. So I just wanted to. Say that's what I was trying to achieve here, and you know, it's it's not. Easy to. Examine what you're doing, but that's what I'm trying to do. Thank you.
All right, I'm I'm trying to figure out and perhaps the clerk can. Assist. Because we've. Voted to reconsider this. Does that mean? But but council. Ratified. The motion that we had. So is that unratified through this, or do we or will we end up at council next month? Confirming the unratificator, the unratify, if I can put it that way. And so. My my follow up question to all that is. If we don't pass. A motion today, a resolution today. Where are we at next? Next month.
Okay. So you agreed to have the discussion to reconsider motion cow twenty twenty five dash zero zero six from the March fourth meeting. If no new motion is passed addressing items one through six today, then that motion still stands. Just because you you voted to have a discussion to reconsider, you haven't actually reconsidered the motion as of. Yeah, there's no new motion to replace it at this point in time. If you pass another motion. It could be one that deals with all six items included. It could be one per item. In theory. Those would then go to council next month for ratification, and they would supersede zero zero six.
Okay, so so having.
Is microphone on?
Yeah, sorry, I apologize. So if I understand this correctly, that if the discussion today. The reconsideration discussion does not lead to any new resolutions, then the old resolution stands. Because we preconsidered and not changed it. So if anybody wants any changes to. The. Resolution of last month, then we have to now get. Get down to it and would say what changes would we want on which lines? Basically, or which which of the six items? And then probably it'd be useful to confirm if we're not if we're accepting a couple of lines and not changing them. Probably useful to confirm that in our discussion. Okay, so counsel Cooper, back to you.
So. What I heard from the clerk was. That we have these two options, and one is to come forward with a new resolution or do nothing. If we do nothing, we're back to where we started. And that's I'm not sure we're going to achieve what we're trying to achieve, so. Or at least what I'm hoping to achieve. So I'd be happy to, if we had resolutions that simply said. That due to our reconsideration. Motion, we are recommending that the council give. Consideration to each item individually and separately at a meeting, and that's what I'd like to see so that we're not. So that we get more meat on the bone for each one.
So if if I may, and and tell me if I'm going too far, this is my attempt at logic. Are you suggesting that? Of the twelve items that are on your original plan, that it'd be one item per month for the coming year? I I I'm going to the extreme, but I'm just trying to.
May not be that. It may have to be two items per month. It depends on I guess how long it takes to deal with each item. But I I don't want to rush it through, I guess.
Okay, all right, no. But I but I think I think it's important simply to have council agree if if we go down that road. Right. So that when when the agenda is being set for next month or the month after, you know, do we include one item or two items? Or three items on that agenda and see how far we get. That's that's to me. Because I also don't want you to to come into a meeting and say, well, I wasn't prepared to discuss this item. If you because that because that was one of your concerns.
I think it's a valid point you're raising. So let me give it for instance, why don't we just? We could have a resolution that says every month we deal with two of the items and hopefully or ideally will get deal with. Those two items. But counselors will be coming prepared not for twelve items, and this is sort of a twelve course meal, and I really think we need a two course meal. Per month, and I maybe other counselors feel differently, but I'm I'm trying to make sure that we give. Due consideration to each one of the matters that's in front of us. And I welcome other comments, but that's my suggestion. Thank you.
Counsel Hazelton.
Thank you. The mover and the seconder of the original. Package. Which is contained is item agenda. Item number eight. The movers and seconders. Spent a fair amount of intellectual think time in preparing recommended be it resolved resolution wording. For this. I guess my frustration with this is when I see what. Where resolutions were passed in committee of the whole. To twenty twenty five oh six. It seems like it's. Mostly nuked the. Carefully worded resolutions that brought significant depth and value. To each of these items. So. My one. I have a question that is to. Why did that good wording get thrown out and we end up with simplistic wording? And I'm focusing on three and four here. As I mentioned earlier, I don't have a huge problem with numbers one and two. But you know, as we look through the other items in this list. There is very useful language that has been proposed to deal with these topics. And I know it's been proposed. To trigger conversation. But. What I'm uncomfortable with is. Strong proposed language or very rich proposed language resulted in very limited outcome. With no dates and times and things like that.
Clerk way.
I agree that the motion. From March perhaps does not have timeframes. That seems to be a sticking point for the two members who were not here a part of that discussion. That being said, the other five members at the time. Did not propose timelines for these. Action items. The resolution zero zero six or the motion resolution zero zero six. Does not negate the recommendations in councillor Cooper's original process improvement list. What it's doing for most of the items. Three included is it sending a small group or a couple of people away. To work on it and come back with suggestions, which may or may not include the original proposed suggestions within councillor Cooper's process improvements. So most of those items are coming back for consideration. The only one. At this point, based off this list that doesn't have a direct action coming back is number four, which is the annual staff work plans. The rest of the other five will come back to either council or cow for consideration for a full discussion.
Dates?
There I agree there are no dates assigned. And there there weren't in the original motion either, which is probably why they weren't considered at the time. Counsel Cooper also just suggested that we. Break this down, his list of twelve into smaller groups of two and bring them back and consider. In smaller portions. One through six excluding four that we dealt with would do that anyways at this point in time. It would bring those things back for a full discussion. Allowing us to focus on that one particular item at a time. So I feel like you're both asking for the same thing, and we already have direction excluding number four that would. Bring us back to what it is you're asking for. Just without the timelines.
Thank you for that explanation. I I want to echo. Counsel Graziano's. Concern. Where we have. Asked staff to do things. And we have huge timelines. Where things haven't been acted on, and I think. Definitely, number three is is a huge one, and I would be very upset if. There wasn't a expedited timeline on dealing with it. And there are. At least one or two in that seven through. Whatever the last number is twelve. Ten, yeah, seven through twelve that I think should be acted on. And should be considered a fairly simple. You know. Approve, delegate to staff, action taken. In a in a in a tight timeline, so. Although councillor Cooper said, yes, you know, put a couple on each each meeting. You know, this is in my in my mind, part of the never never plan. I would rather out of the out of the twelve say, fine, let's deal with four now. We we've already got six done, maybe, but let's get the others done in two more meetings. So let's not drag it out. Because there is huge value in what. Counsel Cooper and councillor Graziano was brought forward. And I think. Pushing it off into the future is not in our best interests.
We've now pushed it off three quarters of an hour where we could have gone through a number of those items and gotten gotten the ball rolling. So I think my my concern is. Follow up you're saying is that we are actually further stalling the process, but councillor Predko, I saw your hand.
Yeah. Excuse me, and thank you through your worship. I was going to. Comment that. It's unfortunate that not all the members were a committee of the whole last month because I thought we did. Have a pretty thorough in and 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 open conversation about these items and got to. Places where we thought we had action items that would be. Made it into the resolution and and albeit in a very succinct form in the resolution. But we did have a clear understanding of what we wanted to do with those items, and I don't want. As we, you know. Continue to talk about. This resolution, we're lacking the direction. An opportunity to kind of talk substantively substantively about what the issues are again. And in an effort to move this forward, would we be able to add? A whereas cloud clause that. People assigned to each of these items will return to cow. At the next cow meeting with. An update and. That will give council another opportunity to talk about these issues with the benefit of. The thought and research that counselors and staff have taken into these matters, and we should be able to get to a closer resolution point.
So are are you suggesting councillor Predko that? All cow agendas in the future will in fact have twelve items on it, update on item one, update on item two, et cetera?
No, I'm I'm suggesting the next cow item has. No, I'm, I'm suggesting the next Cow item has, um, an agenda item to review these six items from, uh, the March 4th meeting. Status update for.
Councillor Graziano.
Thank you, worship and unrelated, but I want to be cognizant of time and not to pressure us. But, um, I, we have a one o'clock, uh, visitor joining our Cow meeting and I'm going to need more time than 20 minutes to do lunch. So, um, I'd like to be able to, if perhaps, uh, not address this within the next couple of minutes, park it and revisit it after our visitor returns because I'd like to be able to get some fuel into me so I can actually cognitively process. Thank you.
I was actually noticing the clock myself and figuring this conversation, this chapter of the conversation, which should end reasonably soon. But before we leave it, we have now spent three quarters of an hour revisiting the resolution that was ratified yesterday. We've pulled it for reconsideration and the only thing that has been, the most repeated item that I have heard is a lack of, um, I'll call it deadline for feedback on item three. That, uh, and I'm just wondering, at this stage, do we want to amend this motion? Do we want to just totally rescind it and start all over again? Or what? And I think we have to decide that. I'd like to see that decided by lunch. As to, you know, we, 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 we pulled it for reconsideration, but what are we going to do with it? Councillor Cooper. Oh, sorry. So I'm going to go to CEO Mariotti first and then, because I saw, and then I'll go to you, counsel.
Thank you, Mayor Kutsia. Thank you, councillor Cooper. Um, I think, uh, certainly item three, and I think there might be another item in, uh, in the process improvement sheet that will be more than likely dealt with, uh, through our guest today, our purchasing lawyer. Uh, and so I would highly recommend that council asks questions specific to a couple of your process improvement points and ask the, um, the lawyer whether, uh, whether it's, it's feasible and, and, uh, and how can we go about doing that?
I'm delighted to hear that response. And I also listened to what councillor Graziano suggested, which is getting some fuel, um, into us. Um, and so is there no reason that we can't park this and hear what the presentation is like this afternoon and then finish this up?
Yep.
That would be my suggestion, if that's okay. Thank you.
All right. So with that, we're going to end this conversation. We're going to break for lunch and we're going to reconvene, uh, by one o'clock for the procurement discussion, the presentation discussion stuff. All right, we're, we're breaking for lunch.
Test 123. Can you hear me Karen? Or Peter?
All right, good afternoon everyone and welcome back to the Township of Georgian Bay Committee of the whole meeting that we're now considering now reconvening after everybody to use the phrase heard earlier, everybody has refueled. And at this point, we'd like to welcome Ms. Clark from LXM Law who will be making a deputation with regard regards to our procurement policy update. So Ms. Clark, over to you please.
Thank you, and thanks for having me. I will be presenting a slide deck two that explains the current policy update that the township of Georgian Bay undertook. And I will be sharing with you my screen. One second.
Would you prefer that we save questions to the end or would you like to be interrupted?
I don't mind being interrupted. And if the question is answered later on in the presentation, I'll just let you know at that time.
Sounds good. All right. Thanks very much.
Okay, great. Now can you all see the first slide okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So good afternoon. As I said, one second. As I was introduced, my name is Marilyn Clark and I'm a partner at LXM Law Firm. We're a little bit about us. We're a boutique law firm that specializes in procurement law. And I personally focus on both procurement and commercial law. I was called to the bar in 2000. I've worked in Bay Street law firm. I spent 15 years as in-house counsel at both public and private sector companies. And I opened my own practice 10 years ago and I continue to support procurement departments across both public and private sectors.
Test one, two, three. Can you hear me Karen? Or Peter?
All right. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome back to the Township of Georgian Bay Committee of the whole meeting that we're now considering now reconvening after everybody to use the phrase heard earlier, everybody has refueled. And at this point, we'd like to welcome Ms. Clark from LXM Law, who will be making a deputation with regard regards to our procurement policy update. So Ms. Clark, over to you, please.
Thank you, and thanks for having me. I will be presenting a slide deck two that explains the current policy update that the township of Georgian Bay undertook. And I will be sharing with you my screen. One second. Okay.
Would you prefer that we save questions to the end, or would you like to be interrupted?
I don't mind being interrupted. And if and if the question is answered later on in the presentation, I'll just let you know at that time.
Sounds good. All right. Thanks very much.
Okay, great. Now can you all see the the first slide? Okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So good afternoon. As I said, one second. As I was introduced, my name is Marilyn Clark, and I'm a partner at LXM Law Firm. We're a little bit about us. We're a boutique law firm that specializes in procurement law. And I personally focus on both procurement and commercial law. I was called to the bar in 2000. I've worked in Bay Street Law Firm. I spent 15 years as in-house counsel at both public and private sector companies. And I opened my own practice 10 years ago, and I continue to support procurement departments across both public and private sectors. So again, thank you for for inviting me here, and it's a pleasure to be here with you today to give this brief presentation. So before I go into the details of the actual new policy, I'd like to spend a few minutes looking at the main drivers for updating the procurement policy to provide counsel with an overview of the project that was begun. So some of the primary folk drivers for the update was the new trade agreement. So in 2017, a new new trade agreements were introduced, and they required municipalities to comply with them. So namely, these were the CFTA, which is the trade agreement that requires free trade amongst the provinces of Canada and the CETA, which is the European Trade Agreement. Also relevant to this update was recommendations made by two judicial inquiries that arose from very high profile municipal procurement cases, which you may know about. One was Toronto. And another was the Collingwood Inquiry. So both all of the both of these items actually require kind of a principal principal driver while causing many municipalities to relook at their procurement policies and and revise them. So we've seen a lot of activity in this area as a Maryland. I was I do want to pause here just for a second to talk about the Collingwood Inquiry a little bit. And I'm not sure how many of you have heard about this. So
At least some of us have.
Some of you have. Okay, so well, I won't get into too much detail, but basically, one the quote from this, which says it all or sums it all up, was from Justice Frank Morocco, who was the judge who led the inquiry. And he said that elected officials should not direct staff to use specific vendors or consultants. They should oversee, not interfere. So that inquiry had about, I believe it was around 200 recommendations on how public procurement can be, I guess, improved or 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 policy like policies that council and staff should follow to ensure public procurements are done fairly, transparently, etc. So because of that inquiry, like I said, many municipalities took a really hard look at their policies and to make sure that they they comply with a lot of those recommendations. So the policy that we've worked on with your staff at Georgian Bay really encapsulates a lot of those directions or directives from the Collingwood. So many purchasing policies similar similar to the Georgian Bay policy have a mix of both policy statements and procedures. But best practices, and again, this came out of Collingwood in governance, are to keep both policy levels erection at the council level and to rely on management at the staff level to put procedures in place that comply with the policy. And this is the approach that we've taken with the update to your policy procedures framework. In addition to reflecting government best governance best practices, moving the procedures to procedure manual has also allowed us to present a very detailed trade agreement rules in the in the procedures manual, which helps staff comply and provide them step-by-step instructions to comply with both legal requirements and best practices in public procurement. The procedures are structured as an A to Z paint-by-numbers guide, and it shows how to conduct a procurement in compliance with the policy and trade agreements. So this means that even if your staff is not very experienced in public procurement, that the procedures that we've put together will ensure that they they follow best practices and don't get into trouble when they're expending public funds. Finally, LXM also delivered a suite of tendering and contract templates that will ensure consistency for the for you to optimize each transaction and be very efficient in your procurement practices. So the new framework, it's it's the framework is standard across organizations that have taken the time to update their procurement and contracting practices. So it's very similar to what your peers are doing as well. And I've talked about this slide without letting the the content pop up here. My apologies for that. So what are the benefits of the new framework? Well, when a procurement expert is on staff, it's it's they can ensure that the rights rules are complied with. And then where there are no experts on staff or to as a basically a training tool for your staff, procedures and templates provide clear guidance and ensure compliance with the policy and ensure that the procurement is executed consistently. This results in less time wasted by everyone. Everyone has confidence knowing what they need to do when and and staff feels a lot better about their ability to and ensure that they're not making missteps. So here's some of the expected outcomes from adoption of this new framework. First, we expect that you're going to get better value for money because the the policy does require or encourage, you know, first of all, competitive procurements, but where that is not doesn't make sense in terms of the time involved in doing competitive procurements and the money being spent. We provide flexibility to allow staff to do directed procurements. You know, this policy will also, because you're following following a policy that's public, suppliers are going to know what to expect. They know what your process is, and they're going to be a lot more confident in in your ability to oversee a public procurement. And what that means for a lot of people's for a lot of suppliers is that they're more willing to bid on your piece. If you have a supplier, many suppliers who have worked with various municipalities or townships that have an inconsistent inconsistent procedures, they don't apply their they don't apply their purchasing policy consistently. They're not certain of what the outcome is. There seems to be some, you know, back office, back office, you know, things that happen, and they're they're not sure that, you know, all their efforts they put into responding to an RP to be rewarded. A lot of suppliers will just stop bidding on certain on certain RP's coming out of a particular municipality township. And this is true for companies as well, companies that do not have very clear purchasing policies and procedures or do not comply with them. A lot of suppliers will 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 say it's not worth their time. So having a very clear purchasing policy and these procedures are going to increase your supplier confidence, and it's also going to increase your public confidence knowing that public funds are being being used for best value for money and that you're using a public forum or competitive forum to get, again, best value for money. It's also there's risk management. The policy will also, like I said earlier, it's going to balance balance risk. So as an example, staff will be able to buy some items, procure some items at low dollar value because it doesn't make a lot of sense for them to spend a lot of time administratively doing public procurements for low value items. So this is balancing the risk of of expending public funds over the benefit. And then the other thing is you're going to have a high level of compliance. So because the policy and the procedures are going to be very clear in terms of what's expected and also providing a lot of guidance to staff to ensure they understand what to do and when, this is going to ensure that there's a high level of compliance amongst staff. So now turning to, we're going to overview the policy, the purchase policy at this point. So the purchasing policy has a few key subject areas. So first, it goes over the roles and responsibilities of council and staff. It delegates authorities from council and and also specifies accountabilities of staff to council. It sets out various procurement thresholds, purchasing thresholds. It specifies permitted procurement methods. It references conduct and ethics, and it also specifies any reports to council. So those are the key subject areas. So under delegated authorities, so governance has evolved over the last few decades. So anyone serving on a government body that's received training will have heard the expression that good governance really involves adopting a new nose-in, finger-out approach. And so that means that appointing a strong management team and letting them do their job is the is a role of council while exercising appropriate oversight. And again, this is one of the directions that also came out of the Collingwood Inquiry. So consistent with this concept is this new framework recognizes that management has certain ability to operate without involving council directly in the operational matters and decisions. But council will receive, well, council has will know that their policy is being followed, and they'll receive regular reports from management, which allows them to have the visibility into operations. And then, you know, this oversight of compliance will is achieved by those various reports and providing various assurances. I see there's a question.
Counsel Draziano?
Yeah, thank you. Through your worship, Marilyn. Thank you for that. I'm sorry. Did I hear correctly? You're saying that the court suggests that council delegates the procurement responsibility to the CAO, or is that just your position?
That well, that is our our position or my position. So council will delegate procurement. The council sets out the policies, and then it's up to the CAO to to I guess, flow down those policies and procedures to serve. Yes.
Okay, great. So just to confirm, it's not a court suggestion, and it wasn't through litigation and perhaps a judgment that that this decision is. It's rather your suggestion. Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying.
No, but what I would say is, as I was saying about the oversight versus involvement, that what did come out of the Collingwood Inquiry. So it is a part of best practices and you know, that it's a part of best practices. So no, there is there is no specific litigation, but it was a judicial.
Counsel Cooper.
Thank you, Marilyn, for the report so far. And I just, on the same point, procurement would apply to all engagements. In other words, if we were, as counsel, interested in finding a lawyer that specializes in X, Y, or Z, wouldn't it be sensible to have that engagement as opposed to procurement between work worked out between the CAO and the yeah, I guess, just the CAO and counsel. So it is, what's your response to that, please? Thank you.
So the the policy does, and this is also in accordance with the trade agreements. It actually lists certain procurements that are excluded from competitive requirements. So legal services, notary services are a part of those procurements that are excluded from competitive procurements. And the reason is, what you've actually mentioned is that you may need a lawyer with a specific experience. You may want a specific lawyer who who who's worked in this area before or has knowledge of a certain case. So those are procurements that are excluded from the requirements who compete them. Is that the question you're? Did I answer your question?
I think so.
Okay. Well, we can. We can circle back if I haven't quite answered that. There's another question from Counsel Grisano, or is that from previously?
No, it's a new question, and thank you. It was based on Counsel Cooper's comments as well. And I just, if I may, and I'm sorry, I don't want to hijack your slideshow, so perhaps these questions are better suited to the end. But given this particular slide is suggesting that council delegate procurement responsibilities to staff. Specific to the recommendation and the proposed updates, section 7.3 gives department heads and treasurer joint authority of up to $125,000. Section 7.4 allows non-competitive procurement of up to $80,000 by department heads based on what I've read, and that includes the treasurer and up to $125,000 to the treasurer and CAO jointly. These are from what the notes that I've taken based on what I've read, and the concern that I have is that it shifts the shift reduces council's oversight over high-dollar procurements and may, from my perspective, potentially erode transparency, particularly in cases where staff choose to bypass competitive bidding. So from my perspective, again, it seems to increase the risk of vendor favoritism or potential for procedural abuse, not to say that our staff may or may not abuse the process. But I have some strong concerns with that. And I guess, how would you address that? Or how do you address or reconcile those concerns?
So I would like to, if if you would, address that towards the end of the of the presentation, because I think the policy is set up in such a way that there are a number of gating points where councils states what authorities the CAO and staff have, what they can do, and the dollar amounts for it. So there's a number of gating points where, as you are saying, if there was inappropriate procurement practices by certain staff, those getting points would be that that behavior would be caught in those gating points. I mean, again, we're trying to, we're trying to balance appropriate use of public funds, value for money, but also efficiency, because, you know, and also council's time. If you were to approve, you know, all the procurements that came through came through, your all your meetings would be taken up, I think, reviewing and approving procurement. So we need to balance your time and also allow staff to do their job within the parameters that you have set out for them. So I think the question is whether you're comfortable with those parameters. If you're not comfortable with them, you might have to lessen that, like, you know, I guess, look at them and make them a little bit tighter. Or if you are comfortable with them, you know, let them, I guess, administer the policy through their procedures.
Fair. If I may make a point on that, and I respect the the suggestion that we we hold this until the end for further discussions. for further discussions. But our current bylaw, specifically sections 513 and 514, allow for up to $25,000 before it has to come back to council for review and consideration. I mean, this is a sizable, sizable step forward with regards to, you know, trust. And I think one of our counselors cites Ronald Reagan, Trust But Verify, you know, frequently. And I, from my perspective, you know, again, I, this is a substantial step forward. And I understand the balance of efficiencies. But I'm concerned at optics with respect to our ratepayers as well and in delegating this, this amount of authority to staff. Thank you. And I guess we'll continue this discussion after.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so we've talked about delegated authorities. So yes, the council delegates procurement responsibility to CIO. Then treasurer will have administrative responsibility for one, developing the procedures and templates in accordance with the policy. The treasurer approves the use of different templates or contracts by staff and assists department heads in interpreting the policy and the procedures to ensure they follow, you know, good procurement practices. Then department heads will be responsible for all procurement and contracting activities within their departments. And actually, which is also in accordance with the budget that's been allocated to their departments. So they cannot, they cannot veer away from the budget. They may subdelegate authorities to qualified staff on, in certain circumstances, but they remain accountable for compliance by their staff. So the department had is, has the remaining accountability. So what about council? So council's role in procurement within this policy is you have ultimate authority for this policy. You approve all expenditures through the approval of your budget. So if you've agreed that a certain department can spend X amount on, you know, replacing equipment, for example, that has been, that, that is the approval you've provided them to go ahead and spend that money, subject to the other requirements in the policy. You also approve the award of material contracts. So that's, we have a dollar value for that. However, you can also, at the point of approving a budget for a certain purchase, require that that contract also come back to council for approval. So although we have certain award limits, or I guess approval limits within the policy, in certain special circumstances, council can always ask and require staff to come back before a contract is awarded to a certain vendor or supplier. And then council can oversee procurement activities through receipt of regular information reports. So this is where we try and force that, you know, you've set out your expectations, you've created your parameters, and then you've advised staff that they can go ahead and work within those parameters. They have to report back to you, setting out, you know, the activities, their procurement activities, what they've done. So you can oversee their activities through those reports. And, you know, and question them on the various procurements that they're making in those reports. And, and that's how you, I guess, fulfill your obligations as overseeing, overseeing public procurement. So is next, let's talk about, oh, sorry, hi, Counselor Bochek?
Yes, thank you. And through you, mayor. I'm just a little bit confused by a bit of this, but it sounds an awful like, an awful lot like the delegated authority that we have at the District of Muskoka, where there's a budget set and the committees have the ability to allocate funds or give permissions. So I'm thinking this is along the same lines, except this has got to do with council and staff as opposed to, you know, council and committee. And perhaps one of the district counselors could chime in if I'm wrong on this, but it seems to be very similar.
That sounds about right, yes. It's a very similar, it's a very common framework that's, that's used. Counselor Cooper?
Just my response to that is that there's a delegated authority to a committee of finance, let's say, but it still has to come back to council, district council, for approval. So there's the authority to consider it, I guess, but there, there's no final approvals that I understand at committee level. Maybe our mayor can comment, that's sort of my understanding.
Well, council as a whole often delegates authority for certain individuals to sign agreements or contracts within a realm that has been set by council.
But a lot of stuff comes back to council for approval.
Yes, including the budget, which is the biggest approval.
The biggest approval, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we're going to talk about the delegated authorities. So delegated expenditure authority. So this is the general expenditure authority that's tied to the council-approved budget. This, we'll clarify when a department head has the authority to proceed with a procurement. The department head must have the expenditure authority first for the estimated contract value prior to initiating a procurement and awarding a contract. So this is step one. I talked about various gating, gating approvals that were required. And this is step one. One, they need to have the expenditure authority, which they get from the budget. So the expenditure authority of the CIO pending council approval of the budget is 100K if sufficient funds are available in a non-competitive procurement is permitted or in an emergency. So oops, sorry, jumped ahead there. Emergencies or another allow staff to spend money in an emergency situation that, of course, would not be in a budget. So those are the only two circumstances in which that would be allowed. And next you have a contract commitment and signing authorization. So you, for contract values up to $80,000, we have the department head who's allowed to commit to that and sign. For contract values of 80,000 to 125,000, the treasurer is allowed to commit and sign a contract. And then over 125,000, or in exceptional circumstances, it's the CEO with consultation of council. So as I said before, so right now, you're rightly, a few of you have pointed out, over 125,000 is the limit when council approval is required. Or as I said, if there's a specific budget item or an area purchase that's going to be made in the upcoming fiscal year, which council knows they want to be involved in or is sensitive, they can flag that as an exceptional circumstance and require staff to come back to council and consult with them before the contract is committed and signed.
But this whole page is for items that were already included in the budget?
Yes.
Thank you.
So again, this, now this is the second gating point, the second approval. Okay, well, then we can talk about some exceptional circumstances as well, where council would need to be consulted before a contract is approved and signed. So if, if there was a competitive procurement and all of the bids came back that were, excuse my background noise, all the bids came back and they were, it was more than the budget amounts allowed, staff would have to go to council for that. Second, another exceptional situation would be the staff doesn't recommend that the contract be awarded to a successful bidder. And that could be a lot of reasons. It could be staff has recently had issues with that supplier. It could be that sometimes what happens, more, quite often, surprisingly, is that a number of bids will come in, one bid is significantly less than all the other bids. And although through the competitive process, it is the winning bidder, council is concerned that the supplier didn't understand the scope of work. And they think it's, it may not be in the best interest of the township to award to that staff. So staff would have to come to council in that scenario. And if council approval is mandated by statute, so, so some procurements will require council approval. So for non-competitive procurement, so those are all for competitive procurement. So you have the competitive procurements, I just want to go back there a little bit. This is, this is being publicly procured, competitively procured. You have, you're getting the best price, best possible price for suppliers who are qualified. So you have that process that works in your favor and supports the decision to, to award that contract. That's why competitive procurements, the threshold for going to council is a little bit higher because you rely upon that, that public competitive procurement process to get the best results. When you don't do a competitive procurement, you have to, you have to lower, you have to think about that a little bit more and, and have a little bit more gating points to make sure that, that, that the procurement is being, is being done properly. So as an example, for a non-competitive procurement, anything below $5,000, your staff can go out and just procure because it's really the administrative burden of doing a competitive procurement is just as not worth it. So we've said, we've set it at $5,000 for them to go ahead and procure directly. This, in my experience, $5,000 actually is quite low. Other municipalities I know have a little bit of a higher contract value. But I think in, in your case, that was the value that is, that, you know, staff and I was told council is most comfortable with. So below $5,000 is, is non-competitive. There's no requirement to consult. The department doesn't have to consult with anyone. A non-competitive procurement between $5,000 and $80,000, the department head has to consult with the treasurer and they both have to approve the purchase together. If it's over 80,000, both the treasurer and the CIO have to approve the purchase. So again, you have multiple people reviewing, removing the procure, oh, sorry, reviewing the procurement and ensuring approving it. And then anything over 125,000, council has to approve it. And it's subject to a written justification that is provided to council by, and a joint recommendation of the CIO and the department head. So all non-competitive procurements, you will actually have insight into and they'll have to explain why they are not going public for that procurement. In emergency procurements, the CIO or delegate has the authority to make that procurement for, you know, for obvious reasons. It's an emergency situation. So non-competitive justifications, we want to talk about that a little bit. So anything over $5,000 must be justified. And there's a list of justifications in section, I think, 17 of the policy. And these align with the CFTA and the CETTA. And they include things like, Counselor Cooper, you're talking about procurement of legal services is one. A procurement of health and social services is another. I guess, non-competitive, you're allowed to not compete those. Financial services is, is another one. I'm trying to think of some of the lists, but there's, there's a list provided there that if your procurement is within those parameters, it supports staff's position that it's a non-competitive procurement. If it doesn't fit within that, then it would be, they would be required to do a competitive procurement. Counselor Hazelton?
Yeah, I, this may sound like a dumb question, but you're a CFTA, Canada Free Trade Agreement. Apparently, according to the news, we do not have a free trade in Canada. And I'm wondering, where would we find out what is covered in that CFTA? Because clearly, Canada does not have free trade province to province.
Well, I would, I do have a summary of the CFTA. So there is, you can download the trade agreement and read it. It's very large. I do have a summary of that. I'm not really sure what you mean by there is no free trade. So what that, what that trade agreement, what it means is that for certain procurements, you can't, you have to give others outside the province the opportunity to bid on that procurement when it's over a certain threshold. Under that certain threshold, you can have your, you can direct it to your people within your province only. But otherwise, you have to make it available, available to others outside your province to bid on. Now, maybe you're talking about, like, in terms of tariffs? If you're talking about that, that would be something different. But in terms of the ability to bid, the CFTA covers that.
Okay.
But if, but yeah, if, if you would like, I could provide a quick, I do have a summary somewhere that I can share.
You're sending it by email. Thank you.
Okay, okay, I'll do that. Okay, so we've talked about, we've talked about competitive and non-competitive procurements and when they need to be done and how they can be justified. Now we're going to talk about, the policy also sets out permitted procurement methods. So for competitive procurements, we have, what we've done is we set out contract values, how the procurement can be approached, and the contract they can use. So we specified this within the policy. And again, this is actually further, there's further guidance in this, in the procedures which your staff will talk about. So for a contract under $5,000, we encourage an informal competitive process. Staff can do an invitational competitive process, but it's not required. And by informal, what we mean is they can call up three suppliers that they know offer this and get pricing and then decide who to go with. It's a very efficient process. And that's suggested because of the dollar value. It's just not worth the other time and effort to put more, to do a more formal process. Contracting approach is an informal contract. It might be just, you know, a bill of sale, et cetera. If for some reason they think it should be a more formal contract, meaning a signed contract, or, you know, reference, you do have, we have provided informal contracts and their terms and conditions. So we've provided those, and I think they are being provided, set up on your website. Those can also be referenced in any purchase order or an email, for example, that those terms and conditions would apply to any purchase. And what they do is protect the township's interests and ensure that you have certain rights and obligations. uh, and obligations in terms of a supplier not providing what they said they would or not doing the work properly, it gives you the legal ba- uh, legal um, position and support to be able to, i.e. not pay them or sue them or whatever you need to do. Councillor Hazelton?
Yeah, I've got uh, two questions for now, if I may. The first question is uh, are are the amounts that you are covering here tailored to our township's size or where do they come from?
Um, they came from a discussion with uh, with your staff, I believe your C O um, and others that were on. So I I, in full disclosure, I wasn't on the original um, group that that started this project. So I was not there, but I've been working with just Vinder. And um, I believe it was her and uh, and um, other staff within uh, the township who indicated what the numbers would be that they thought council would be comfortable with.
Okay, so that's um, perhaps a topic for discussion at another time, the the um.
Oh, sorry, sorry to interrupt. I would also say that in terms of get arriving at those values, um, because we do so much work with various municipalities and townships throughout Ontario, we also provide input into what appropriate numbers are. So, as I said, I think I said this uh, on an earlier slide, five thousand dollars is actually a pretty low number um, compared to what I've uh, seen. And for Minnesota, for um, you know, townships of your size, it is a low number. Um, the one twenty-five is pretty common, I see one thirty often. Sometimes, sometimes I see a little bit less, but generally it's in the um, one twenty-five range in terms of uh, sorry, I'm uh, like when we're talking about uh, the approvals on the previous slides, that's a typical uh, range to give approvals to the C O and treasurer. And sorry, you had a second question?
The second question is um, and I'm focusing on the second part of your slide here. Um, we recently, yesterday were uh, had a report come from staff uh, on expenditure of around eighty thousand dollars, I think it was in that, in that ballpark range. And um, they could not find three suppliers. Uh, so we are in a township where um, the the likelihood of people wanting to commit and bid on projects may not be as competitive in some of the larger municipalities or more centralized municipalities. And so uh, I see here you get quotes from three suppliers or more, but we only had one supplier that would bid on it. And I'm wondering um, where is the discretion in this process?
Right, so in that case, for uh, for a purchase that's between five thousand and eighty thousand, um, if they did not get three uh, three quotes, they would have to get consent to move forward because they didn't get the three quotes, because they're not complying with the policy.
So consent then comes back to council?
Um, I believe, you know what, I'd have to double check that in this case, I.
Director Radigan?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Fitzier, through you to councillor Hazel- Hazelton. I believe the one that came forward, um, the procurement that came forward yesterday was in regards to the Drainage Act. And I do understand there's very few experts within that field. Um, the actual budget was twenty-five thousand, and what happened was it, the bid came in at eighty thousand, hence why we had to come back to council. We didn't have budget for for eighty thousand, so that was part of the reason. Um, the reason why you're seeing us asking for five thousand to eighty thousand is just for the reason that you suggested. Has, our municipality is unique in terms of its location and in terms of dollar value. So we're not necessarily getting as many bids on on the competitive process that we do put out there. Um, recently, we we've put some bids out for vehicles and we ha- we received zero um, response to those bids. So hence why staff and senior management sat down to determine what is the best approach to become more efficient by ensuring we have the policies in place that allow staff to to do their job on a day-to-day basis, but still be able to report to council, whether it's based on an information report or we come back to council based on a threshold the council feels comfortable with.
Okay, and just for clarity, the the number or the example I was uh, referring to was the carpet and uh, workspace thing that you only got one bid on. Anyway. Not, not for publicity, that's the reference point. Thank you.
Councillor Graciano? Yeah, thank you, and uh, through your worship uh, to Marilyn. Marilyn, you you cite um, uh, past experiences with other municipalities um, and suggested average uh, of what you've seen um, with, I guess through your your working relationship or your firm's working relationship with other municipalities. And I, and I wonder um, specifically what municipalities, eh, well, in a broader question, have you endeavored or has your firm endeavored to seek out other municipalities within Ontario that are uh, comparable to our size, specifically by way of number of full-time residences, uh, as well as the the overall tax revenue? And what's the average based on those uh, those municipalities? Um, you know, I, you've you've cited today uh, much larger municipalities, specifically Toronto, as well as uh, Collingwood, if I'm remembering correctly. Um, and and I just want to make sure we're comparing apples to apples here when you're, when you're talking about what you've seen consistently throughout your tenure at this firm, as well as um, your support in other municipalities. So what comparables have uh, have your, has your firm determined um, or has has sought to to endeavor to research? Um, and and what are those municipalities on average um, delegating to their staff as uh, as authority to to proceed under a procurement policy so similar to the one that you're suggesting here today?
Okay, uh, just to clarify, the thresholds I'm talking about here are not City of Toronto thresholds or uh, uh, the town, the town of Collingwood thresholds at all. Um, the thresholds I was referring to in terms of uh, other townships and municipalities were um, much smaller than Toronto for sure. Um, and not even the G A T A, they are, they are smaller comparable um, townships and and towns that I'm 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 referencing when I talk about the threshold values that appear within your policy. In terms of the threshold, um, the the threshold amounts that appear within this policy um, and checking them with other comparables. Um, as I mentioned previously, I was not initially on this project at at its launch. So I, I don't know if a comparison exercise was completed. Um, and I'm not sure if just Vinder uh, is aware of that or not. Sometimes our clients discuss to do that exercise, to do a a comparison, but other times they they don't. It's it's um, you know, it's i- it's it's service that you can request if you'd like um, to do it. But without uh, I guess, a specific report, I can tell you these numbers are pretty generally what I see. I don't, and like I said, the only anomaly I see a little bit is the uh, under five thousand is a little bit lower than I've seen. And some of the townships I've worked with act- are quite a bit smaller um, the township of Georgian Bay.
Director Radigan?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Fitzier, through you to councillor Graciano. Uh, unfortunately, part of the scope of this project did not include comparing it to other municipalities. Um, when I did go out for for procurement, I didn't include that aspect as part of the project simply because I, I don't believe we have a comparator. There, there is no like to like, we are a unique municipality. I do agree, looking at comparables is always a good thing. Um, but in terms of what I've seen transpire in the year that I've been here, I I do know procurement has been has been difficult for some staff in ensuring that we can efficiently do, do what we need to do to provide the services that we do provide. Um, I actually worked with another Marilyn, um, Marilyn Brown through L X M Law. Unfortunately, she retired at the end of this year. Um, she was the one who I worked on the project with, and we had worked together as well in Springwater. Um, and there, we did look at other comparables because Springwater is so close to a lot of other municipalities that are growing. Um, but within Georgian Bay, we didn't, we didn't make that a part of the scope. It's something we can definitely go back and look at. I'd, I, I wanted to look at procurement in Georgian Bay more specific to Georgian Bay in terms of how we operate. Um, just seeing the difficulties we've had getting uh, bids in on our our tenders. I, I've just noticed that it's just not the most efficient process here.
Eh, eh, your worship, if I may, a follow-up?
Go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you, Director Radigan, thank you also, Marilyn, for confirming. Um, I I'm a data-driven guy, I make decisions based on data. Um, and while I can appreciate things may be tough, um, it begs the question, is it a function of our, or is it as a result of our procurement policy that's making things tough? Is it a function or a result of our lack of marketing? Um, are we on different platforms, what platforms are we are, are on, or what platforms are we not on? When it pertains to our procurement and and broadcasting and blasting out our procurement requests and requirements? Um, so I I very much would like to understand comparables. There, we have the coorthos, uh, we have the archipelago, we have some neighboring municipalities that you can draw reference from that share similar, um, you know, similar eh, types of geographical topography as we do. Um, a- and so, and perhaps even um, as remote uh, as we are. Um, so I'd very much like to understand what the average is across those that would compare before I endeavor to approve a five X increase in authority to to staff. But that's just me, I'm a single councillor, and I don't know if my fellow councillors share that concern, so thank you.
Okay. Um, if there are no other comments or questions, I'll continue to uh, discuss this slide. Um, I mean, it it's, you know, eh, the information is set out in a table, so it's pretty um, easy to um, absorb. It's so, again, under five thousand, it's an informal competitive process, informal co-contract. Between five thousand and eighty thousand, what's required is that there'd be an informal competitive pro- uh, process which requires three or more suppliers, we talked a little bit about that. Um, staff has the option to do a invitational competitive process, which means um, they would invite um, three or more suppliers to submit uh, proposals. Whereas an informal competitive process doesn't necessarily require a formal pro- proposal, it might just be a quote submitted, et cetera. Uh, and then this would be uh, again, an informal contract, which would be like reference to your Ts and Cs or a more formal contract that would be signed. Next, um, procurements, uh, contract value of eighty to a hundred and twenty-five thousand, that would be an invitational competitive process, so that would be uh, an X that's posted on your tendering website. Um, and you would obtain, sorry, invitational, invitationals, you, sorry, you uh, provide it to three um, suppliers you're aware of, ask them to provide a proposal um, that would be rated and uh, awarded to the the winning bidder. optionally, they can do a public competitive process, that's where you would post the uh, procurement on a public tendering website, um, which presumably you'd uh, you would get a wider array of uh, takers in that situation or of bidders in that situation. Uh, the contracting approach for that contract value is still an informal contract, so it doesn't require signature, but the Ts and Cs would be referenced in the um, in in the document that retains, retains, awards the the work and retains the contractor's services, it could be an email or you know, purchase or et cetera. And then over a hundred and twenty-five thousand, it it has to be done by a public competitive process, meaning it has to be posted on a public tendering site. Um, and along with that process, there's so many days to allow suppliers to reply. They have to provide a proposal, a written proposal, which takes a lot of time and effort on their part. So just a note here, a lot of suppliers, unless it's worth a certain amount of money, they will not take the time to write a written proposal and submit it. It's just, it it may not be worth their time. So when you require written proposals, I think you need to be um, I guess cognizant of the time and effort on the actual contractor's um, side as well. So um, generally, I would also say that's where wiring up a public competitive process at a higher value makes a lot more sense. I think you'll attract, you, I think you'll attract people who who believe that's worth their time and effort to to do a formal proposal. Um, or something underneath that they're not going to want to do that, they may not want to do a formal written proposal. Um, the policy also talks about standing arrangements. So um, standing arrangements, these, this establishes an open contract um, with uh, with certain suppliers. So you will um, do your competitive procurement. Uh, you will choose your uh, suppliers based on the um, evaluation scheme that you've set out, and then you'll establish an open contract with that supplier. So it means you don't have to keep going back. If you're going to buy a lot of um, goods or services from a certain supplier, you don't have to continue to go back and forth. Um, so this allows you to buy goods and services as and when required. Can be with one supplier or multiple suppliers. Um, what's good about this is that it can be used to um, bundle purchases across the organization. So if many of your departments need a similar thing from the same supplier, it allows you to have, you know, use staff's time and effort to set up one competitive procurement and allow everyone to benefit from that. This usually also, if you're going to buy more under a contract, it really usually results in the supplier offering you better pricing, and it's greater efficiency in your procurement efforts as well. Um, another um, another thing the policy addressed, which actually helps make your procurement process more efficient, is a pre-qualified suppliers list. So the pre-qualification of suppliers improves your efficiency for all future procurement. So if you know that you're going to be doing a lot of construction, um, you can actually go out and do the competitive process in advance, vet all of your suppliers and pre-qualify them. And then um, so that would be your public process. And then the uh, the future work that you draw down under that, under those pre-qualified suppliers would be your smaller um, would just be the s- smaller pool of pre-qualified suppliers. This again helps create efficiencies in your procurement process while still taking advantage of doing a public uh, procurement process. Councillor?
I'm going to ask that we keep this moving on, we've been at this for an hour, and I'm watching people sort of eyes glazing over.
Okay.
So I'm going to ask you to go a little faster, but we'll let Councillor Predko uh, interrupt.
Okay.
Thank you, and through you, your worship, I appreciate the opportunity. Um, my very quick question is, and and perhaps this will become clear in the next slide or two, in which case you can just continue. But given that we generally have trouble getting three qualified suppliers, if have, if we had a pre-qualified list of suppliers and we only had one supplier on that, would that help us in any fashion?
Um, well, yeah, you could, you could, uh, so, so it does depend. And the procedures for staff, actually going into detail on how to set this up. But if um, if you have an ongoing requirement or need for the same services, um, or you know that you're going to need these services, you you can, it is a good way to make your procurement process more efficient. You can set up, it does have to be a public process, so anyone can bid on it. If you happen to only get one supplier under a pre-qual um, procedure. you can still move ahead with them as a supplier and keep them uh, keep them on your, on your list for future procurement needs. You're, you're, when you're competing for this, you have to be really clear about how it's being used and when it's being used and the dollar value anticipated. So all suppliers understand what's, what, when you'll be using this list. And so it gives interested suppliers an opportunity to decide whether they want to be on that list. I'm sure that answers your question, but I, I will uh, I'll just jump ahead. Um, so we talk a little bit about pre-qualified supplier lists and why it's good. We talked about the benefits of this already. A cooperative purchasing and buying groups, your policy also allows that, which again is a great um, is a really a great uh, resource to have. It allows the uh, public buying group to do the uh, procurement, to the competitive procurement themselves, and you can benefit from all of their work. It usually allows you to get better pricing. Um, it's um, th- they are really good organizations and definitely should take advantage of, of those. And then supporting local vendors. So a lot of people, um, a lot of people talk about this, um, want to support local vendors. So I have this, I have this slide to talk about it. You have to be careful with um, local preferences because you still have to comply with your policy. And your policy says you need to compete um, certain levels, certain thresholds of procurement. So in, in your case, the um, a- and you also have to be careful you don't uh, violate the trade agreements, which don't allow you to have a geograph, dra- geographical um, uh, specification um, or preference for, for your procurements. So, but what you can do to support local um, local uh, vendors is at your low dollar value items, all of, all of that can go to local vendors. So if that's um, a direction you want to give your staff, you can, and, and I think it happens naturally for something for $5,000, it's going to be a local vendor. Your invitational um, purchases as well, you can invite local suppliers to participate in that. And that helps you support your local constituents and businesses um, to help keep your tax dollars, you know, back in your community. Uh, next, ethics, uh, conduct and ethics in purchasing. So um, so council, you know, the, the principles of, of um, the code of conduct of council members, you need to make sure you remain at arms length from staff and suppliers and allow the procurement process that you've sanctioned through the policy to, to play out. If you do not, this is where the Collingwood Inquirer, this is where the uh, the mayor and some counselors and Collingwood got into troubles because they did not stay at arms length. They were talking to suppliers, they are taking advice from suppliers, and they directed staff to award um, a procurement, not to the um, you know, to a certain supplier. So that's when you start to get into trouble. And as counselors, this is where I would suggest you would want to provide the parameters to staff of how and when to do procurements, when to come back to you for further approvals. But to try to remain at arms length, let them do, let them follow the rules you've set out. And when they don't, then, then you have oversight to uh, change. A- and this is what the poli- uh, you know, this policy is as much for, to protect you in terms of that type of um, that type of trouble that um, council, uh, counselors and um, mayors can get into trouble with. Um, and balancing the need for counselors to oversee to make sure that staff is performing properly. So again, it is a, a balancing act. Um, and then lastly, we have uh, what kind of rounds this out? You've, is the uh, regular information reporting to council. So you've provided staff with parameters within which to perform their procurement functions. Um, in return for that level of independence, they have to report back to you on how they're doing, what contracts they awarded, um, and um, let you know what is being purchased, who it's being awarded to, et cetera. So in that way, you have oversight and you can ask questions on specific purchases. And that brings us to the end of this presentation. Um, in terms of the policy that's uh, that's being proposed, you adopt. Now, I know there is, uh, so we're at 208. I don't know if um, I think some questions were withheld. If you have time for, if we have time for questions, I'm, I have the time, of course. But uh, if anyone else has questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Um, well, given that you can then clearly stick around for a few minutes, I'm going to go to our um, to, to Director Radigan saying, you, you, I mean, I presume you have nobody in open forum. Correct, okay. You're going to give us a procurement policy update for discussion. And I'm just wondering, I don't know how long a presentation you have, but whether or not um, that we can have Ms. Clark stick around in case questions surface from that, that are um, that you may prefer she answer versus yourself, given her experience. And if we could stop sharing the screen, then I can see everybody's face.
Sorry, thank you. I'll do that. Um, there we go.
Over to you as to what, what is your plan at this point, or which?
Thank you, Mayor. It's your, through you two members of council. So the existing procurement policy has been in place since, I believe, 2016. Um, the one thing we, I did note, what I did first start here is that we did require a modernization of our policy to ensure we did follow the existing trade agreements, as well as ensure that we are able to efficiently um, provide the services to the residents. Normally with, with council meeting on a monthly basis, it, it, it does become difficult and it does take the process, it does make the process lengthier than what we would like. Um, hence why you are seeing the do- the dollar values and, and the threshold values that we are, we are requesting. But the idea about today's meeting is really, what would council like to see? We, we have proposed the procurement policy. It is, it is in there um, in the agenda item. Um, and, and really, I'd like to have an open discussion in terms of what council would like to see in the policy, uh, what changes they would like to make, and the goal would be to come back for the May council meeting um, to, to have it ratified. But ultimately, it is truly up to council what they, what they would like to see in the policy.
Thank you. And we'll start that with Counselor Graziano then, please.
Thank you, worship. Um, I have a few. So to answer our director's question as to what council would like to see, um, I'm going to cite specific sections uh, and then advise as to the concerns that I have. Uh, sections through 7.3 and 7.4. In contrast to the current procurement policy sections 5.1, 1.3 and 5.1, 1.4, I feel that the new sections or the new newly proposed sections um, provide excessive delegation to staff um, relative to uh, the, the current policy. Uh, citing sections 4.1, uh, which defines council's role narrowly as only uh, to approve budgets and consider modifications. Uh, the concerns that I have is that um, the current policy section, or relative to the current policy of section 1.4, it provides a broader oversight by requiring council to approve all expenditures exceeding 25,000. So as a higher level understanding of what I hope to see here, I feel that this is seeking to sidestep council and policy application. Uh, and I think that uh, in kind of combination, it goes hand in glove with the excessive delegation to staff. Um, carrying on with regards to sections in the proposed policy 17.4 and 17.9 uh, versus the current policy section 5.6. Uh, I feel that this, uh, the proposed policy is reducing transparency for high-risk contracts uh, relative to the current policy. Uh, and I'm concerned with regards to the transparency or the lack of transparency and the reduction of transparency. Um, the new thresholds uh, and rationale creates loophole for large value, non-competitive contracts to be approved internally without scrutiny or debate. Um, this increases the risk, at least from my perspective, of abuse or conflicts of interest. Um, next, moving on, section 16 of the proposed policy. Uh, specifically that staff uh, or that grants staff the authority to disqualify vendors for conduct, performance issues, or other subjective criteria. Um, with no council review and/or appeal mechanism. I'm concerned with this. There's no current policy um, or no current specific wording such as this in our current policy. And my concern specifically is that staff can now unilaterally blacklist vendors uh, based on perceived integrity uh, without council's involvement, raising questions around due process, uh, vendor rights and potential misuses of administrative discretion. Um, carrying on, and, and sorry, I've, I've written notes, so I'm working for my notes because again, I had to review it in detail. Um, and there was a lot to review here. Um, the proposed section specifically 22.3 requires only quarterly reports to council on contracts over $25,000. Uh, the reports are for informational purposes only. Uh, the current policy implies a more, uh, you know, active and real-time reporting structure through monthly council meetings. Where the spending uh, decisions must be ratified before a contract is awarded. So um, I'm concerned that the information flow to council is delayed and/or discretionary. Um, and by, you know, uh, regulating reporting to a passive quarterly update, uh, we as council are being sidelined in, in real-time governance and cannot act swiftly uh, in cases of concern or cost overrun. So those are my concerns. Again, I'm going to repeat 7, 3, 7, 4, 4, 1, 17, 2, 17, 9, 16, and 22.3. Um, hopefully, and I'd be happy to provide this uh, detail or level of detail to our uh, staff as well, if in the event that they wish to have me repeat that. Thank you.
Director Radigan.
Uh, thank you. Through you, Mayor Kuzier, to Counselor Graziano. I do appreciate those. If I could receive those through email, that'd be fantastic. But I think what, what I'm also looking for here are actual recommendations in terms of how council has a delegated authority would like for me to proceed. Um, I, I, I'm happy to take the suggestions and come back, but I don't, I, I, I don't want to delay the process by constantly coming back if I don't exactly know what council is exactly looking for. So perhaps we could vote on some of, some of the, the items that Counselor Graziano has, has made suggestions on. And perhaps council could provide recommendation in terms of what they would like to see come back.
If I may, your worship, as a follow-up?
Go ahead.
And I'd be happy to share this with you. And so I'll summarize this in an email to yourself as well as to council, so everyone has um, purview and, and/or visibility to, to what I've suggested and, and to staff's point. If they'd like to come back and discuss this in greater detail in a future Cow meeting um, and/or through any uh, revisions slash iterations of the current policy, happy to do so. Um, as a general recommendation, myself, given that it has been requested, I would like to also see uh, some comparables and so, some averages across municipalities that are relevant uh, by way of size, revenue, um, and perhaps some geographical constraints as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I think I'd like to give every counselor a chance to speak to this generally, and then we'll see whether we want to narrow down at least some of it. Um, so I'm going to go to Counselor Cooper, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I've spoken now. No, I'm
Go to counsel.
Thank you. Sorry. Um, I'll be trying to be brief here. Um, so this is sort of both the, to Marilyn and Jazz in terms of the presentation. And um, I, I'm not going to go in, in this particular case, line by line. It's more just some observations and, and questions, frankly. Um, how much of this is required in the municipal act? Or is it just at our discretion? Do you understand my question?
Thank you through you, Mayor Kuzier, to Counselor Cooper. What's required in the municipal act is for council to set up some type of policy when it comes to procurement. Um, the details of it come into play in terms of other provincial guidelines. So it's not necessarily just the municipal act. Um, it, it's more other regulated guidelines. Um, I'm, I'm trying, I'm losing some off the top of my head. I'm, perhaps Marilyn can assist.
Well, I mean, the ones that we did um, that we did mention is, are the trade agreement requirements is one of them. Um, the other, the, the really, the big thing that drives this is best practices and and trying to avoid what's happened in some of the larger city centers where inquiries have happened because of um, because of large procurements that seem to not follow their own process and had people in political positions influencing uh, the procurements rather than letting the process. Um, you know, and le- letting staff follow the process. So that's where a lot of these um, you know, thresholds and, and the reason why um, you know, you come to, you come to council for informational purposes or for guidance when it's outside of the policy is to help navigate the need to, to, to protect council from allegations of um, of self-dealing or the conflicts of interest and that. So really, it's, it's a lot of is, is best practices.
So, so thank you. So that's the, the reason you'd have some of these guidelines. But I'm sensing that it's sort of a made in the township of Georgian Bay to a certain extent. Is that not correct? Well, this is all legislated, every line by line here.
Uh, through, through you, um, Mayor Kuzier, to Counselor Cooper. Every single municipality has a procurement policy.
That's not what I was talking about. Not, I'm not talking about not having a procurement policy. I'm talking about line by line is not required by the municipal act, is it?
I'm confused. Could you please clarify what you mean by line by line?
Every single point that we see on uh, pages uh, 1 through 20.
The province does not have a template.
No, we, so it's a made in township of Georgia Bay procurement policy with the help of a consultant and so forth.
With the help of best practices throughout Ontario.
Thank you. So I just want to understand that. And some of this was developed with staff. Uh, some of the staff, as I understood, that's what I heard, I think. Is that correct? I'm just clarifying what I
Through you, Mayor Kuzier. What, what was discussed with staff was more in relation to the procedures in terms of how they would work and with the thresholds. The majority of the policy was created by LXM Law, since they are the consulting firm and they've done many policies throughout municipalities. Um, hence why we, we did look at going external. It, it was something that I wanted to ensure we created that was based on a best practice throughout. So it's not, it's not a made in Georgian Bay, line by line.
But we can change it if we want, line by line. That's all I'm getting at. No?
Absolutely. It is, it is council's policy.
So we're, we're understanding each other now. That's really, all I'm trying to get at is that uh, this can be um, it's not legislated to have 20 pages with 57 rules. It's, it's, we've come up with our own rules. I wanted to understand that from, I like to look at things from 10,000 feet first. Do you have a, something else to add?
If I may, Mayor Kuzier. Yeah, but we also don't want to look at it from 200,000 feet. So there needs to be an element in there that, that protects us. So you, you, you can't be bare, bare bones because a lot of what's been put together in this policy is based on various previous historical challenges and, and trouble that, you know.
And I, I understand that. And I'm, I'm just not getting into the weeds. I'm, I'm, I'm at 200, 3,000 feet. And I'm sure you'll be happy that I won't get into the weeds. So there. Um, and I'm glad the staff have worked on this. I think it's a, a good document, but we need help also from our council to look at some of these things. And one of the things that's been raised, and I uh, keep focused on this particular issue, which is it's, if, if we're uh, developing policies, it's not a bad idea to consult and look at benchmarking with other municipalities that are similar. And um, that, so in size, so there's sort of magnitude uh, of population, of uh, budget, of variety of things. And I often sees that we compare ourselves, for example, to the six municipalities in Muskoka, which are not necessarily the same as us at all. So some are somewhat like us, but others are not. And uh, so I, I think it's important to realize that and benchmark with And so I think it's important to realize that and benchmark with similar municipalities like the Archipelago, maybe Thousand Islands and others that I can think of. Communities where there's, even if they're larger, like Collingwood, where it's a very high seasonal population. So I just throw that out there as part of the sort of benchmarking piece that we should really give consideration to relating our performance to those type of places as opposed to elsewhere. And including the, the sort of, as I said, budget size and mix of population. And one of the ways I like to look at our population, and maybe we could apply it to other places, is that yes, we have thirty-five hundred permanent residents which require services year-round. And we have eighteen thousand plus who require services six months of the year. So we could cut that number in half effectively and say, we're really only looking after, you know, nine thousand plus thirty-five hundred. And we could do the same thing with other locations. So just from a benchmarking perspective, it may help us target where we look as opposed to where we don't look. So those are just a couple of upper-level ten, twenty thousand-foot thoughts on my part. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hazleton.
So I have a question for our director of finance. What we are talking about here is a procurement policy. It's not a budgeting process, and so this follows after the budget. Is that correct? So if I oversimplify everything, if, if staff bring matters to the budget discussions and council gets visibility into the things that are needed and we get visibility into all kinds of things and operations that I probably don't really care about, but we get told about them and we have to approve this, that, or the other thing. But I think what I, where you're going with this is, once the budget exists, there needs to be somebody who has approval to spend the money. Is that the distinction that we're getting to here? In other words, if, if council approves eighty thousand dollars for carpets and, and, you know, desk units, you can't go spend that money unless somebody has the authority to spend the money. But once it's approved, you probably don't want to have to come back to us to spend the money because you've already got approval to. But you have approval processes in this document that give you that permission. Is that? Am I understanding it correctly?
Through you, Mayor Kuzier, to councillor Hazelton. I'm going to say yes and no. So the idea of the budget is, yes, council sets out what, what the year will look like in terms of approval limits. The majority of capital, based on, based on the thresholds, may or may not come back to council. That is entirely up to council if they wish to see it all come back or none of it come back, or if it's outlined within the policy based on a threshold. Most of the, the maintenance on an ongoing basis usually would be under five thousand dollars. Or the idea would be to set up pre-qualified vendors where, let's say, you, you needed an electrician, you would hopefully have a pre-qualified list of electricians you could run through rather than going out and having to get three quotes all the time. So the, the idea is, is to make the process more efficient, but also at the same time to provide council with that, I guess, that trust of we are following the policy based on what we have budget approval for.
Okay, so we have heard from at least one councillor who was very concerned about non-competitive bids, which we seem to probably more routinely do than competitive bids. There may be good reasons for that. We've talked about that a little while ago. But in this procurement policy, is that going to handcuff you where it says you need competitive bids, but you can't get them?
Through you, Mayor Kuzier, to councillor Hazelton. If, if the policy requires us to provide, to do a competitive process, we will do a competitive process. If we do not receive any bids, we are then required to come back to council regardless. We would be asking council for direction in terms of us going out and doing a non-competitive process. Or we would, council could advise that we go back out and do another competitive process. At the end of the day, it's, it really depends on the dollar value. We have had instances where we have no bids. And it could just be the lack of tenders that we do have going out. We're not, we're not a large municipality where individuals are willing to spend the time to write up a proposal, and that's part of it. If it's not worth millions of dollars, you may not get a proposal.
Right. So on that specifically then, I read or saw some material in Marilyn's presentation where there is a proactive reach-out strategy in some bids at a certain level. I think it was a hundred and twenty-five K or eighty to a hundred and twenty-five K or whatever. And yet, back to what we've already discussed, we're a small municipality. We have unique needs. I would think that we would want to proactively reach out at a much smaller threshold, where we know, not all the time, but where we know what we're asking for is not a regular thing. So personally, I would like to see a proactive reach out on a much smaller dollar value. So the, because I think part of the problem we're getting here is that we don't get bids because nobody's looking on the website searching for fifty thousand dollar bids. So if we were to pick that number and say, fine, we're going to post it on the website, we're also, maybe, maybe somebody on council or on staff knows somebody that might be interested in bidding, so send them the RFP. And like, you're not getting involved. You're just saying, hey, look, we're doing something. You should be looking at this. So I think that that might be something that would be useful for the township to, to get a better hit, if you will. But back to kind of the budgeting thing, I'm less concerned about the numbers in your approval processes if, as I think we've understood, we're going to be setting the budgets for those things anyways. So I've lived in a previous world of you have a budget, but you can't spend the budget until you got authorization for an expense. So you got to get that, that authorization. And I think what you're defining here is, within the staff world, you can, at certain levels, have the authorization for the expense. You don't have to go back to council. I think that works personally. I think that that's effective. And I'm less concerned about the dollar values in that scenario. Because we want to be controlling the big picture and the budget and not every individual item. And once we've approved a budget, then I think we should be turning it over to you to go off and do your thing. Anyways, this is my comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Bochek.
Well, my comments are simply because the mayor said we should all have a comment on this, but I'm not, in any stretch of the imagination, a genius when it comes to finance. So I'm going to give you all that I have here is, it would take me a long time to digest all this, and I don't think I'm going to do it today. I need more time on this. But what really scares the hell out of me is the dollar values, because I don't know if too many of you will remember our CAO called Brenda Black and what happened with the money that left this township with Brenda Black, because there was no limits. There has to be limits, but the limits have to be sensible. And I really don't think that the limits we seen here today project our spending in this township. So that's all I've got right now. Pretty cut and dry.
Thank you. Councillor Predko.
Thank you. My comments will be fairly brief, too. The one question through you, Chair, that I'd like to raise to Ms. Ratigan is, has this procurement policy been run past our auditors? And do we feel confident that it has controls in it that will give confidence to the year-end review of our expense spending?
Through you, Mayor Kuzier, to councillor Predko. It's not, it's something that we would provide them with the policy. They're more concerned with our internal controls. So they're more concerned with the procedures, not necessarily the policy. They would look at the policy, but then they'd want to watch that we are following the procedures. Because that, that is the whole point of the policies, to ensure we do have the internal controls in place.
Okay, now your confidence will be in the procedures that you share with them. And I appreciate that. The, you know, we're talking a lot about limited suppliers and that's the only area that I think if I go through this and provide you with some feedback, trying to identify areas where I think we, you know, may need transparency for situations, especially on the pre-qualified vendor list, that if we have one vendor on the pre-qualified list, we're still maintaining some sort of sense that, that it's still open to other people and that it hasn't been fixed to that one person who's pre-qualified. And then we talk a lot about how many sole-source procurements we have and competitive versus non-competitive bids. I think the quarterly reporting that is being proposed in the policy will help council in that we'll see the proportion. I think right now, we only see the ones that are non-compliant with the number of bids that you receive, and we have to give approval to. But we don't see all of the procurement work that you do that is compliant with our current policy. So I think we'll, we'll get a greater comfort in the spending habits of the township once we get quarterly reporting. So I look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Jarvis.
Yeah, just to show that actually I'm not ignorant of some things, I'm much aware of the, the Collingwood report that came out a number of years ago. However, of course, there's a lot of reading in there. I didn't do all of it. But I just need a refresher, Marilyn, if you don't mind. The, the Collingwood report was as a result of a a sale of an asset and then procurement of other assets that didn't go through what I would have considered normal procedure by way through staff. As a matter of fact, there seemed to be an awful lot of interference from members of council, if I've got that correct. Do I have that general observation correct?
Sorry, find my microphone button. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so if we use that as an example, in my mind, the procedures are really, really important here. I have no concerns with the amounts that have been proposed. I just want to make sure procedures are in place. I think it's already been covered with all the other discussion, that make sure that procurement is done in a manner that is, I think it's already been suggested here, is transparent and adheres to, as we've already discussed, your common and sound, sound practice. And I think that's what we're getting out of this recommendation from Marilyn and with the proposal that you put before us. I'm not big on the details, but it looks pretty good to me as it stands. And as I have just said, I, my fear would be that there'd be interference by members of council in the procurement process. I don't want to see that. And by way of what's come forward here, I, I think that's covered, which is, which makes me feel more comfortable. And so I appreciate the work that's gone into this. I'm sure there's some refinements that need to come out of it, but I'm happy with the numbers as they currently stand.
Thank you very much. Yeah, no, I quite appreciated all the work that's gone into this and, and I, I'm less concerned about doing comparatives with our neighbors and and to see whether or not their first threshold is five thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars or fifteen thousand dollars. Because I think that's one of the reasons we hired Ms. Clark and her firm, is because they've done a lot of these in the past. And if I heard anything from Ms. Clark, the five thousand dollars is probably, is lower than most other municipalities. I, and I think we have to balance efficiency and effectiveness with versus, I'll call it oversight. And, you know, council is to have oversight. Part of, and as they say, part of the way we exercise that is, A, certain exceptions will come in front of council. We've had that in the past. We had, we had that just yesterday. And I would expect that to continue. And this allows that to continue, is that we have situations where more significant amounts of money are being spent and we don't have competitive bids, or we're above budget, or other ways, other, or other situations where staff have decided, based on policy or based on their own personal feelings, that it'd be so much better if council agreed with their proposal. I think that's, I think we need to do that. I think that's very important. But I also think, one of the first things I heard this afternoon was oversight versus versus interfere. And I don't think we as council should be actively trying to interfere with our staff doing the, the job that they were professionally trained to do. And, you know, I, I think sometimes a temptation, especially if you're have, you know, past experiences, I do, in doing a lot of numbers and accounting or other things, and you, or you love your, your data and your facts and figures. I think we as council have to be careful not to get too far into the, what I'll call the nitty-gritty. Because then we're not, then we're spending our time on little details where we should be spending our time on the bigger picture and, and the policy versus minutia of, of running the township. So I find myself quite, quite pleased with this. I, I, I can, I agree with Director Ratigan in her intention of getting a consultant to assist with this, to make sure we meet the current practices. We're up to date that way. And I think it's important, as was raised by Ms. Clark on a number of occasions, that there are, there have been, and Collingwood's one of the more impressive examples that are nearby, but there have been numerous cases in the past where staff and/or councillors got into trouble for the procurement that was outside proper procedures, transparency, and certainly involved interference of one form or another. And I think we have to be conscious of that and be careful that we don't expose ourselves to that kind of thing. So I, we may be doing some fine tuning on this policy as, as the discussions continue. But I think overall, it's a good policy and that it behooves us to to move forward on this filing and get it approved as soon as we practically can. But I'm seeing hands for round two, so we're going to start with councillor Cooper on round two, please.
Going to be very short. We discussed something earlier today. Maybe I brought it up, but the committee structure issue. And I see this process here would fit very well in with the committee structure. And the reason being is that you can do budgeting by finance department, by operations, by planning and building and, and others. And, and if we had councillors that were, as we see at the district, on a committee that was in an area that they had an interest, A, and so align that with the interest and their skills, we could do our budgeting and, and the, the requirements that come forward would come through under a committee structure, which would then come back to council. So I'm just, I know we don't have that right now, and you can say it's way off topic, but we've got to think ahead, too. And that's why I'm making that suggestion. Thank you.
It's not the first time a councillor has made a topic that might, some might consider off-topic.
Well, you might, we're never going to get anywhere if we don't start thinking differently. That's really what I'm driving at. That's why I have my process improvement list. Thank you.
One thing that, just aside, now that, now that you've gotten me drifting in that direction, is that at district council, one of the conversations that's taking place is that maybe we should have more committee of the whole meetings, because there's some councillors who are frustrated that things that have been discussed at committee aren't getting their full airing with two-thirds of the councillors. Councillor Hazelton.
Director Ratigan. You heard councillor Bochek a few minutes ago. Are you familiar with that? Okay. Something that would perhaps make all of us feel better is if the experience that took place, I was not a council at the time, but councillor Bochek was. Were you here then? Too long. Anyways, I, I think it would be useful to understand how that debacle took place and if a procurement policy like this would prevent that kind of thing. That I think would give us a lot more comfort, because I, I don't know the details of what happened, but I've heard things like prepaid contracts that normally never get done and crazy things like that, where money left the township. And I'm hoping. And I'm hoping that a policy like this would have enough bells and whistles and checkpoints that that couldn't happen again, but it would be interesting to be able to say, okay, well, we know this happened. It was, it was crazy. And these are the reasons why it can't happen with this kind of a policy.
Part of our colorful history before any of us involved pickup trucks. You should, if you don't know that story, you should look into it.
I will for sure. Thank you, Mayor Kuzier. And through you to Council Hazelton, I, I'd be happy to meet with Council Bocheck or any other counselor that has history and would love to hear what did transpire. Yeah.
I think probably most of the information is, I think when this council here started, there was a, our CAO brought something about a $30 million lawsuit that we're just going to throw away because there's no sense chasing it anymore. And that's the one I'm talking about. So I think there should be documentation on that.
So my interest is not to burden a lot of staff time. It's more to, okay, here's generally what took place and here is why that isn't likely going to be able to take place with a policy process like this.
Yeah.
If, if, if I can just jump in, I, I believe at that time, that individual had a, a dual role, not just as a CAO, but also as, as a, as an additional executive function. We don't have that anymore. So there's always going to be a secondary backup. Someone is going to see right away if, if, if there is something untoward with the finances. And I wouldn't know how to spend township money anyway.
I just love, that's the part that I was looking for, was I would love to see how the, the safe marks are in place so that can't happen again. That our policies and the procedure here has enough spine that it's going to protect us in the future. Because what we had in the past certainly didn't protect us.
Irrespective of the purchasing policy, we, we have fail safes internally amongst the different positions that, you know, even, even for example, a, a credit card expenditure, there is always a secondary person that will check another individual's credit card expense. And, 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 you know, so if someone were to go out and buy a truck other than using a credit card, I have no idea how, how else anyone else is going to use, you know, company money, because we don't have company checks or certainly I don't have access to, to company checks. Everything is electronic and everything has to be backed up by a second individual to sign off on that, on, on that expenditure.
I can tell you from back in my accounting day experience that most policies and procedures, if they're decent policies and procedures, have fail safes in it to catch the individual who's trying to cheat the organization. If you've got two who are willing to cooperate with each other to cheat the organization, then that's harder to catch. If there are two that have some authority. All right. I'm, I'm seeing that our clerk is drafting a, a possible motion. Is that correct, Clerk Way? And while she's doing that, Ms. Clark, I want to thank you very much for your presentation and all the work you've done on this file. It is appreciated. There, as you can tell, that we have a, a council that is considers this a very important policy to consider, to make sure it covers us in, in, in an appropriate way. And we appreciate all your experience and knowledge that you put into this. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
So, boy, it's, it's lengthy. You, 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 okay. So I'm just going to read this as a draft and then we can discuss to what degree we want to change or not. But is moved by Council Bocheck, seconded by Council Cooper. Be it resolved, a draft procurement policy and presentation by LXMM Law LLP be received. And that the committee of the whole provide feedback and input into the draft procurement policy prior to the next meeting of council. And that members provide written comments on the draft procurement policy to the director of finance by April 17th, 2025. In other words, two weeks from now, roughly 10 days, okay, yeah, ish. And that staff be directed to bring a revised draft procurement policy to the committee of the whole. I've already read that. It is a little bit redundant. So are, we, we're, you're proposing that they come back to the committee of the whole before it go to council. Director Radigan is, was hoping is going to go, I heard her earlier say that she was hoping is going to go to council next month.
Thank you, Mayor Kuzier. It, it is entirely up to members of council how they wish to, to have this process follow through.
Council Graziano.
Thank you, worship. I, I would question why the rush and to get it back to council so soon. Given the complexity of the topic as well as the legalese around it. So my recommendation is that we don't make any hasty decisions and/or bring this to a vote too soon. And then second to that, I think 10 days doesn't provide or afford enough time for us to really do our due diligence and compare and contrast current versus future state. And then the other issues that may be there in order to have it drafted and put in, in writing. So I would suggest that we look at extending that 10 days out a little further. Thank you.
Quick way.
Just be advised that if you extend past 17th, we're going to miss the May meeting cycle. So it'll be pushing into June. That's all. That's why I put the 17th.
Council Bocheck.
Yeah, I would be fine with the way, the original way that was written, where it comes back to Cal. I don't want this to, 10 days to digest it all and then go to council. I, I think there needs to be more time spent getting to the bottom, what we feel is right. And I certainly can't do it on a one and a half hour meeting. I might take me two weeks to three weeks to understand this. And then it should come back to Cal, because I'm going to have to talk to a lot of people that know a lot more than me about this. So if we come back to Cal, I'm fine with it. But if we come back to council, I'll vote it down.
All right. So the, so the, so the only debate now is are we going to leave April 17th in and have, have it come back to the May Cal? Or are we going to give everybody a month and a half to have come back to the June Cal? Council Hazelton.
I think in the interest of expediency, I think we should stay with the 10 days, bring it back to Cal. And if there's some reason we need more time, we can make that decision then. But let's try to set a, an aggressive target for us to, to work with.
All right, I'm going to try this motion one more time. So I'm going to have moved by Council Bocheck, seconded by Council Cooper. Be it resolved that the draft procurement policy and presentation by LXMM Law LLP be received. And that members provide written comments on the draft procurement policy to the director of finance by April 17th, 2025. And that staff be directed to bring in a revised draft procurement policy to the committee of the whole. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. I got six out of seven in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much. All right. Now, back to process improvements that we discussed. Okay, so let's, let's have a, a 10 minute break and at five after three roughly, we will come back and discuss process improvements. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so, um, as a quick oversight. Counselor Predko has departed. Counselor Bocheck has advised he's leaving in half an hour. Um, but so we, our numbers are diminishing. A couple other counselors have suggested to me they're tired. So apparently it's not just me, which is, I think, so with that. I'm gonna propose something. One, let's not even talk about seven through twelve. Two, what we did this morning on, um, one through six, if I can call it that, is we, um, was it word rescinded? Or what was the word we used? Uh, recall, there's some R word. Reconsider, we, 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 we voted that we reconsider that motion. So now we have choices. One is we can discuss, discuss whether or not we want to just let it stand as is. Two, whether we want to make any changes to it and then I'll call it, you know, as amended type of thing. Or three, whether we want to reverse it a hundred percent, we could do that too. So, you know, do we let it stand? Do we reverse it? Or do we make a couple of modifications towards it and, and have it move on as is? And then come back to this topic. And I'm gonna go to Counselor Cooper first because you're behind all this. And then I'll go to Counselor Hazelton because his hand is up.
All right, guilty as charged. But, uh, yeah, I, I would just like to suggest that I think the sort of the uh, reconsideration could be that we, uh, come back in May with, uh, having each of us individually reviewed one through six with any, uh, recommendations for that, at that meeting, rather than trying to do it here when we're all tired and some of us aren't here, etc. And then the other thought I had, just to, if I we, okay.
Can we simply postpone? Now that we it's not the reconsideration.
So how do we?
How do we, if council wants to discuss it further at the next month's Cal, how do we do that? A challenge for our
Uh, but if uh, but if we just break quorum, a couple of us jump off, you don't have enough.
No, that, that still won't solve the problem. No.
Nice try, Counselor Bocheck.
Thank you for that suggestion. Please don't do that. Um.
Turn your computer on.
You could pass a motion stating that you're going to consider items one through six at that May, whatever that date is, May seventh.
The May House.
Sixth, May Committee of the Whole. It is probably the I don't wanna call it a loophole, but you're supposed to address it immediately. That's the purpose of it and not push it off.
But we are.
But, but at least one
I'm sensing that, yes.
At least one counselor wants to push it off.
I think we all do.
Can I just, just comment that the, one of the reasons, one of the reasons we have, uh, we push for reconsideration is because when we first looked at it, some counselors were not on hand. And yet again, now we have, uh, at least one counselor not on hand.
But the, the danger, yes, is if we do that, that means we could never meet in the future as a council unless all seven were present. Or we have to repeat everything. And I don't think, I think that would be a horrible precedent.
Good point. Thank you.
And now, now I'm gonna go to Counselor Hazelton. If you've had your hand up electronically all this patiently waiting.
The, uh, I think, first of all, I, I was disappointed that this, um, resolution from Counselor Cooper and Counselor Gazziano was even tabled when there were a significant, and I think two counselors absent is significant. Um, and I think that the, the, uh, the nature of this resolution is so important that this th- these twelve items should be, uh, discussed with a full council. And, um, I would definitely be in favor of, um, uh, doing whatever we have to, to do to, um, uh, put this back on the agenda for me. Uh, corollary could be, um, that, that would be May and then June and July could be, June could be seven, eight, nine, and July could be ten, eleven, twelve. And I don't think that's, that's more digestible, shall we say, versus saying there's a a half dozen here that we have to look at. And, and so that would be my suggestion as a go forward. I don't know whether that meets with the clerk's approval, but
Okay, but, but I think, I think it's very important because I, I am, I'm very concerned that with the comments about what we didn't discuss with the full council. What happens if in May, June and/or July, a counselor is absent? We can't hold up business because a counselor is not able to attend for reasons that maybe even be unforeseen.
So we need a better reason.
Yes. This conversation is deteriorating already. Um, Counselor Hazelton is, I know your hand's still up, but you also put your okay, go.
There was general consensus that what we did, uh, on items one and two were, uh, agreed with. And I think that, um, I would not like to hold up because of, um, formalities of process, those things going ahead. So I think we should approve one and two. Defer the three, four, five, six, uh, to May. And deal with the other ones in May as well. I, I think that, um, I don't think we should lose sight of the fact that we appeared to have general consensus in one and two.
Uh, I'm gonna go one step further. If we go down that road, I'd also say if, if we're gonna approve one or two, let's approve code number six because after all, it's already on the clerk's work plan. And then so we'll, in other words, one, I'm, I'm gonna throw it as a possibility. Three items approved, three items for May, three items for June, three items for July.
Good idea.
Um, counselors online, any comments? No. Okay, so we, we're, we're, we're doing a, a quartet of triples.
Right.
Because we would never want to be perfectly straightforward. I shouldn't have said that with the mic on, should I?
Right. Excellent.
Council. Moved by Counselor Cooper, seconded by Counselor Hazelton. Be it resolved that committee of the whole approve the recommendations for items one, two, and six of committee of the whole twenty twenty five zero zero six. And that the following process improvement items be brought forward to the following committees of the whole. Items three through five, May twenty twenty five. Items seven through nine, June twenty twenty five, and items ten through twelve, July twenty twenty five. All those in favor? Uh, I got tons of hands going up. That is carried. And moved by Counselor Cooper, sent to the Counselor Jarvis. Be it resolved that the council, the committee of the, the committee of the whole does now adjourn at three sixteen P M. To reconvene on May sixth, twenty twenty five, or at the call of the chair. All those in favor? And we are, whatever we are, adjourned. That is carried. Thank you very much.
Safe driving, fellows.
Good night, everyone.